All right, I don't know. I'll just be backwards.
I will call to order the Wilsonville City Council work session for September 9th at 5:32 PM and ask the councilors if there are any comments as you review the agenda. Any comments on items of consent, which is just a minute? Any councillor concerns? Councillor West?
I know, I live in Villebois and I saw the email, thank you for the email, about the accident that happened just about a block away from my house. Just from my kind of experience, because my backyard, right beyond my backyard is Gramps Ferry, so we hear this motorcycle and this speeding all the time. It's a point to where, I mean, it's like shockingly disturbing, fast, aggressive, and it's not, as you guys know, it's not new. It's been a really serious problem for like a long time. And now we had, I would consider a major accident, thank God, thank God, the police officer and nobody else was really injured in that, but we were lucky. And so I was wondering if you could get an update maybe about that? And then who, is that the county road? What role as a city do we play on what, is that a Clackamas County Sheriff only? Do we police that, even though it's on a Clackamas County? Like, how does that all work out? And like, what's the impact, you know, for us, you know, going forward here with that? So I am really concerned. I could see this guy, I mean, we have retaining walls, he's not going to plow into our backyard, but like, it's pretty bad. So I don't know if you could give us an update?
I can tell you what I know, and then Gina's here and she can fill in the gaps, but what I understand is that there have been frequent complaints about this motorcyclist in the neighborhood. And so the, our police department took all that intelligence and tried to figure out a sweet spot for when they think that person might be rolling through, and they happened to be there, and then that led to a pursuit. So that's kind of what I know right now, and then Gina can add anything that she might want to add as well. But I think that was a Wilsonville police officer that was in pursuit, so.
That's correct. I don't really have anything more than that to add that's accurate, and it was one of our officers. In terms of the damage to that location, it's one of the monument signs, the Villebois Neighborhood Monument signs, that is HOA property. The city's been in contact with them, they've been in contact with the Sheriff's Office because the Sheriff's Office, because we have a contract with the Sheriff's Office, they are responsible for handling those kind of insurance claims, and the HOA has been in contact with them.
And I don't know, have we heard if, whether or not they were able to capture any images, license plate numbers, or anything like that about?
I have not heard, I don't know that information.
So I'll follow up with Rob, he's on vacation, but we'll see if we can get some more information, and we'll send that to you in email. Because it wouldn't just be simple speeding at this point, it would be eluding a police officer, which is obviously way more significant than just a moving infraction. So if I find anything else, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Councillor Lindvill?
I just have one there. I've been kind of watching the, one of the Nextdoor sites, and I noticed that it was today, yesterday or today was the first time that I saw a notice that was put out by the city, kind of warning people about the painting, the striping that was going to be done on the roads and to avoid the areas. And that was really great, and the map was really good, so it was really clear which streets were going to be impacted. But there has been a kind of an ongoing stream of concerns from citizens that, about the impact of the construction on all of the streets, and particularly what the impact has been on Wilsonville Road. And the, I know that we don't, I mean, we need to get the work done, it's not an unusual thing, it's something that the city does, but the comments were saying that there wasn't really good communication about what the, what the impact was going to be and when the construction was going to be going on. And I just wanted to forward those as just kind of concerns that some of our citizens are having. I know there's never enough communication, and it's never timely enough, and, but there, you know, there's always the concerns about traffic, and so those are just some rumblings that are kind of going underground there that are, it isn't even underground, it's just people that are really concerned about the impact on our roads.
Are we, are you talking about Town Center Loop?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, at almost every entry point, there is a reader board that tells how long the construction's going, going to be happening. But you're right, we could always over-communicate on stuff like that as well. I mean, it was in the Boons Ferry Messenger, Facebook, Twitter, everything else, we'd put it out on Nextdoor, but maybe more frequent communications to let people know kind of what the end, the end game is would be helpful. So I will touch bases with Bill tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move to our pre-council work session and hear from Mr. Breshear and Ms. Reibold about the transit-oriented development.
Hey Dwight, we need better lighting on you. There you go.
All right, well, good afternoon. Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors, I'm Kim Reibold, Senior Planner with the city, and with me tonight is Dwight Breshear, our Transit Director. And we're here today to begin a conversation with you about your vision for transit-oriented development, also known as TOD, at the Wilsonville Transit Center. The Affordable Housing Strategic Plan identified exploration of TOD at the Transit Center as one of the plan's high priority implementation actions. And the first step with that is looking at developing a development opportunity study to further refine our goals for this site and get a better understanding of the type of development that could be feasible here. So with me today are Brian Vanaman and Kurt Zahas of the Leland Consulting Group, as well as Darcy Vincent of DDV Consulting, and Matt Brown of YBA Architects. And they are assisting the city in putting together this development opportunity study. And I don't, oh, there's Brian, okay. Brian's going to briefly walk through some of the key highlights from an existing conditions assessment that was done for the project site, and this full assessment was included in your packet. But we want to spend the bulk of the time here today discussing what you see as your vision for development on this site. What this will do is inform the development of some site alternatives for the site, and those will serve as the basis for what we as a city would want to put out there for developer solicitation for the site. I'll note that final development and funding program would actually be finalized once we have a developer onboard and we're working with them. But this work that we do now is going to serve as our framework for how we want to move forward on this site. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Kim, and good evening, councilors and mayor. I'm going to attempt to share my screen, and I think you can all see it. Can somebody confirm you can? Great, okay. Okay, I've just got a few slides to talk about the TOD site. Let's see, so first, we wanted to show the TOD site in context along with the Transit Center. And what we're attempting to show here is many things that you're probably familiar with in terms of the surroundings, but we think are really important from the point of view of the future residents who could live here, and also critically, the funders of affordable housing development. Those funders are often looking for really all of the things that are available in close proximity, including jobs, many parks and amenities at Villebois, critically, the commercial services a little over half mile to the south, the bike and pedestrian facilities on Barber today, and in the future over the I-5 Bridge to the Town Center. So we'll be talking about some of the funding sources, and many of them are, give credit, give points for all of these amenities. So that's one of the reasons in our conversations with, with some of those funders, they see this as a good site. I haven't mentioned transit, obviously there's extensive transit throughout the city into these sites, and then also to, to points north via West and to Salem from the Transit Center. So this is part of several applications that were submitted and approved by the city in the early, mid 2000s. And really, the key points that I want to point out here are that in 2008, this master plan was approved by the city, and at that time, part of that was the approximately 1.3 acre TOD site here, which was labeled as a future development parcel. And then another site that I'll be talking about and calling the Kinsman Site was labeled as future park and ride, and this current park and ride is built out today. So this site has been intended and approved for, for development, mixed-use development since at least 2008. So zooming in on the site, its exact size will depend on where we draw the southern boundary of the site. It actually extends kind of beyond what's really buildable today, it'll need to be revised, that's why we have an approximate here. We think this, the site is a good size and good dimensions. We've looked at some conceptual layouts that would allow us to put around 100 units of housing on the site, certainly could be more, certainly could be less, and we'll get into more details as we, as we move on. There's some particulars about the site which we'll probably go into in future presentations, but it, everything we know about it now makes us believe that it is buildable and it could accommodate on the order of 100 units, and again, possibly more. So going, going around the site to the north, there's obviously a large, almost 400 space parking lot that is owned by TriMet, managed by Smart/Wes. We think this is really important for a couple reasons. One is that in our thinking and in conversations with TriMet, we believe that, that there's opportunity for shared parking on some of the lot, and that that would have great benefits for the TOD, because that would enable us to, if we have to park on the site, that means a lot fewer housing units can be on the site, or if we have to do structured parking on the site, it really challenges the development feasibility. TriMet is open to sharing parking, and in the evening, when you have the most resident parking, this parking lot is generally empty. Even at peak periods before COVID, it was 50% full. Here's the Kinsman Site, and you know, another option is to actually have parking for the TOD site on this Kinsman Site. However, because of the city's work in building out Kinsman and getting the approvals for that, the DEQ would, there would be a regulatory or approval process additionally to, if we wanted to build this out as, as parking for the TOD site. And then there's a range of environmentally sensitive areas. The oak tree area here is lovely, it's nice as an amenity, but it's probably, may or may not be truly usable by residents in the future, we'll try to look into more of that. So we like the site. So in terms of timeline, we are here, we're analyzing existing conditions, and we're talking about your vision tonight from June to September. After tonight's meeting, we will be working within our team and with your staff and preparing a series of alternatives, and that means kind of urban design, architecture to some degree, and also financial analysis of those alternatives to confirm that we do think they're feasible. And we'll also be preparing a developer request for qualifications or a request for proposals, and we'll be sharing that with you in November. I want to jump forward to the last item on this timeline, there'll be others and other activities as the site moves forward, but a critical one is that we see funding applications being due from developers for a couple of these major programs that I'll say a little more about in, in spring, the summer of next year, it can, could be March, April, we don't know yet because we don't have the final guidance from the funders until January. But I point this out because that means that if, if the city wants to target and set up a developer to submit an application for one of these programs, for example, the Metro Bond, that means that there's going to have to be a lot of activity between November and February, that would be releasing a developer request for qualifications or proposal, selecting the preferred developer that, and then the developer doing a whole range of due diligence and kind of narrowing in on the project in agreement with the city that, that they would want to submit to the funding entities. So we're going to come back to these questions, but the critical things we want to talk about tonight are who you believe the project should serve, what types of physical and place-making attributes the project should include, and what other goals you may have. And to frame that a bit, what we did is, is kind of design or think about conceptual projects one and two. And both of these projects, I'll start talking about project one first, but they're really influenced by your strategic citywide plan, but also by the, the funding sources that we believe would fund them. So project one is funded by the Metro Bond and the 9% loan accommodation tax credit program or LIHTC program. And because of the criteria of these programs, we, we believe that a, a project that would meet the goals of these two programs would be a homeless veterans housing project, it would have permanent supportive housing programs in the ground floor, those could be mental health programs, they could be job connection programs, they could be counseling programs, the types of programs that would serve this population. And these, these funding sources are going to target 0% AMI to 60% AMI, that's area of median income, so low to very low income households. Project two, and I should say both of these, we can see an approximately 100 unit project happening here under either, either project. This would be a family housing project, so a greater number of two and three bedroom units, 30 to 60% AMI, so slightly more of a workforce offering, and it would have, probably have some culturally specific services for the Latinx community. The LIFT program shown here requires a culturally specific program and services in the project. And because of your strategic plan identifying the existing and growing Latinx community in Wilsonville, we felt that made sense, at least conceptually. So this could be something like bilingual education or job connection programs in the ground floor. The other program is the 4% loan accommodation tax credit program. So I'm going to go light on these other details, but I wanted to point out, one of the important things about project one is that, as we see it, this would be pursuing two competitive funding sources, the Metro Bond and the 9% tax credits, both of which have applications due sometime in spring to summer of 2022. Project two would only be pursuing one competitive funding source. This 4% is not competitive, it's, as long as the project is financially feasible, the state, which is OHCS, funds the project. There's some other details. Another issue I want to highlight is ground floor commercial space. This is something that, you know, I think naturally comes up when we've talked with staff and others. And we're, just showed some pictures here, this is that well off main in Tiger, which has ground floor commercial space. And this is a under-construction, a portable housing project in Portland, it's called the Songbird. It does not have ground floor commercial space, but it does have what we might call active ground, ground floor space. So that includes stoops that are over here, lobbies and entryways, community space for residents of the building, it's got a play area for kids, and it's got a garden on the other side of the building and some other features. So it's got a range of ways to make the ground floor interesting, active, and a community space. And right now, commercial space is required by the current zoning, but we believe there are several challenges associated with requiring commercial space. We do concur that it's, it's a desirable amenity. The challenges are that the cost of commercial space is not covered by affordable housing funding sources. Those funding sources are directed towards funding affordable housing, not commercial space. The other thing is that by including commercial space, that requires the entire project, including the housing, to be built using prevailing wage rates, which tend to be 10 to 15% higher. And so it creates a cost bump on, on the rest of the project. So we think combined, there's some other issues, including where you park the commercial space, but we think that combined, this could be a significant issue for the project because it, it could create a $3 to $5 million funding gap, requiring the amount of commercial space that would be required by the current zoning. So we think it's a significant issue. So in closing, I want to come back to these questions, which are, which are the two project types that I've talked about that align with the city's goals based on the strategic plan and your thoughts? Maybe there are other target residents or other services that I didn't talk about in project one or project two, that's certainly conceivable that we should be thinking about. And then in addition to affordable housing, what other site amenities should we be thinking of at the site? And I would add to that, do you see commercial space as a required, an absolutely required amenity, or is it a goal that we should try to motivate developers to provide, that may not be a requirement? And then are there any other desired project outcomes? We've listed a bunch of kind of thoughts about what desired outcomes would be in your packet on page, starting on page 13, but I'm not going to go through all those here. That's my presentation, I think I'm going to stop sharing, and, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Quick question?
Councillor West, I want to recognize people for questions. I mean, I think this is when we're going to ask questions, right?
Yes, that is, that is.
Okay, so we have, and I just want to do a time check, do we have until about 6:10? Brian?
Yes, it's 25 minutes, yes.
Okay, so I imagine everybody has some questions, so Councillor West, if you want to ask a question, then we'll move on to some other councilors.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor, for recognizing me. My question was about the lower level space, and my question is, can that lower level space be something like, like a gym for residences, but it's also open to the public at a fee, or a bike rental place, so people can get bikes to get around town, but you can also rent if you're from the public, or Amazon mailroom that the public, but also for the residences, to try to have some crossover? That's not necessarily like, it's amenities for the residences, but it's not really commercial? I don't know, I'm trying to think a little outside the box here, to try to find a way to not necessarily have to get a Starbucks in there, like, we don't, the economy can be shaky moving forward, we have a lot of uncertainties going forward, so like, maybe a Starbucks isn't going to go in there, right? Like, we have a big issue in Villebois around the piazza for 10 years now, like, nothing is lasting in that lower ground space area. It's a little bit different geographically, but I thought about it, is that a way to get creative to still like, fit within the, to get funding, to not have to deal with prevailing wages, is that a way to get creative? And then my other question is, can you, can you explain to me, like, I get the Metro Fund, but there was, on that chart, there was something called LIFT, and then there was 4%, and it was the same as the other 9%, so why would one be 4% and the other one be 9% at the same type of funding source? And then can you explain that other one, just like a little synopsis on that?
So let me take the ground floor space first, and I think, so I think that ground floor space can be separated into two kinds of things. I'll call one community space, so that might be a community meeting room for residents, or a dining space for residents, or a gym for residents. And we could require that, and the developer could build that, and that would not trigger prevailing wage. And the reason is, because the other type of space is commercial space, that's a space where the owner of the building has a, has a lease with a tenant, and there's money changing hands. So Starbucks is paying the owner of the building. So if there's no lease and no rent revenue, then the affordable housing funding sources will fund it. So we could, the problem is, the city's zoning requires quote, "commercial space." And so it's a little confusing, but we could, you know, we could require community spaces or strongly encourage community spaces, and you'd be likely to get them. If you require commercial spaces, it creates challenges in terms of prevailing, triggering the prevailing wage rates.
And make sense?
The, to your question about, about 4% LIHTC, 9% LIHTC and LIFT, I think Darcy is on the phone, I'm going to start off with that, and then assuming Darcy's in the meeting, she can add on to it. But 4% and 9% tax credit programs are the most widely used affordable housing programs in the country, they're an IRS program. I won't go into exactly what the 4% and the 9% means, but basically, they have different targets, they're administered by the state, OHCS, and they have different targets. The 9% program provides more money to the developer, and therefore, it requires deeper levels of affordability, requires the developer to serve different special communities, and it provides more money in exchange for that. The 4% program requires not as deep a level of affordability and provides less, less funds to the developer. And so that's, that's the reason you see the difference in, in project one and two. The 9% requires more, and so it's competitive. The LIFT program is a, is a different program, it's offered and administered by the state, and just has a different set of criteria, I mentioned some of those. One is a, is an emphasis on serving communities of color, providing culturally specific services, which could be an educational program, and it's bilingual, and, and family-sized units, two and three bedrooms, a significant number of those. So those are some of the, and that's some information about those programs. Darcy, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think with, you know, I'm getting too far into the weeds, you articulated it really well, just kind of the, the service groups that they're intended for, and 9% just as a, generally speaking, 9% credits can pay about 60% of total development costs, and 4% credits pay about 30% of total development costs. And those are very rough numbers, but it tells you why one is competitive and the other is not.
Thank you. Councillor Leehan, you have a question?
Yes, not exactly a question, I thought this was partly comment period for, they're looking for comments. But I think it's important that we keep separate what our desires are regarding vertical housing tax credits and commercial on the first floor, and a TOD. And these are two different things, and they're in two different locations that have two different neighborhood profiles and objectives between Villebois and this one at the, at the Transit Mall. So I, I don't want to see us getting those, those objectives confused, because where I, where I am eager to push the, the vertical housing tax credit in Villebois to be a little bit stricter in terms of commercial on the first floor, or that would serve the whole neighborhood, because you have a large neighborhood at Villebois. This is different at the Transit Center, and, and there, I, I think it might indeed be preferable for all concerned for those to be those kind of spaces, meeting spaces, workout spaces, mail services, whatever it is, package services, that would predominantly serve the residents of the building. Now, maybe some, maybe package services could also serve people who are commuters, but, but it's appropriate in that location and that, and with that kind of, that kind of subsidy or whatever it is that's going on there. subsidy or whatever it is that's going on there, to be a TOD, to, it's appropriate for that to be more focused on the residents of the facility, because that's not in a densely populated surrounding neighborhood like Villable is.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, didn't David Leland take us on some trips to some years ago to see some example TODs, like, let's say, for instance, Salt Lake City? Was that one of them? Where they have these really good TODs? I mean, I'd like to see some of the examples. It seemed to me David Leland had, was involved in so many different projects around the country that, that, I mean, I may be mistaking, mistakenly remembering, but it seemed to me that it would be good to, for us to look at some of those projects, because the one that we did go and visit in Salt Lake City was really inspiring as a TOD. So a TOD is a different animal. We're after a sort of a different objective, set of objectives than we are at, you know, vertical housing.
Thank you, Counselor Leehan. And I want to stick, I appreciate that. And so because we have limited time, instead of, as our next couple of counselors, let's, you know, we're not trying to suggest the types of retail or something like that, but answer those questions. And I think that was a good point to distinguish this from the Villable. And so we're going to have a little bit more time to this. Counselor Linville?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I understand you're wanting to get some direction from us as far as Project One versus Project Two. And as I looked at your very comprehensive report, believe me, it was very comprehensive. I had a little bit of concern, because it appears that under Project One, that we would really, you're really recommending a permanent supportive housing in that, in that model, whether it's veterans or it's disabled populations or mental health or whatever it is. And there appears to be more funding and less competition in that area. But I have concerns about Project Two, because I think, you know, I have, I have kind of some concern about our family housing and being able to provide affordable family housing. But it looks like the MFI has to be too high, and it is likely that, that they, that they would not, you know, it would, it would require that they have too high an income to qualify. And so it kind of defeats the purpose of having affordable housing for families. So I wanted you to kind of comment on that as we try and, you know, get to the place of deciding Project One versus Project Two.
I guess my, my comment, if I'm understanding right, it seems like one way to address that would be look at Project Two and see how, see how we could potentially be serving some households at a lower median income. Because I know from the citywide strategic plan, say, 30% to 50% of MFI, there was a real need. So the more units we could get in Project Two that would be serving 30%, 40%, 50%, maybe that would be preferable. And there are ways to do that. We could, you know, we can have units that are more affordable. We could work with the Housing Authority potentially to get some vouchers. Darcy, anything, I mean, I think that's something we can look at. Would that, would that address your issue? Counselor Linville?
Well, I guess, I just would hate to see us set the requirement at 60% of the median family income, because that's, that's not the population that I think we need to be serving. So, and it didn't appear, at least on page 43 of Attachment One, it did not give the option of something that was 30 to 60. It gave just 60, and it was pretty clear in the comments that this would really be a challenge for affordable family housing.
Darcy, can you just say a little bit about that and what, how we can look at some lower incomes?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. I think that we're really in our infancy of reviewing kind of the financial feasibility of this project. And so as we dive in deeper, we can take a look at what kind of funding sources might be brought to bear that would allow us to have some units that are deeper skewed for, you know, families earning more in that 30% range. I agree with Brian. I think one of the viable methods to getting there is figuring out how to have some rental assistance to the project, but we just aren't far along to have researched all of those options to date.
Thank you. And we are over time, but I want to also ask Council, Council President Ockert to comment.
Thank you. I'll try to make it quick. I wondered if, when I was reading that packet information in the 60% too, because there were some things that intrigued me about the Project Two, mainly because I know a lot of the affordable housing units that currently exist within the city are smaller units. So I was interested in having the availability of some, some larger units that might better suit families. But I wondered how that, the income requirements work, and specifically, it's, you know, one of the goals, I would think, is to be able to retain families within the community that are part of our schools and part of our, you know, community fabric, and be able to see them thrive and stay in Wilsonville. And so if, you know, somebody's income is fluctuating, and is that 60%? Is it an average? Or once they, you know, once they are growing in income, do they suddenly need to find another place and now they can no longer stay in Wilsonville? Or, you know, those are some of my questions. I guess I wondered as we continue to look at this and how it might work. One of the other questions that I had about Project Two was that ground floor space, and I know that specifically part of the Project Two concept was to have, let's see, I believe it was defined as culturally specific service, services as part of the idea. And I wondered how that works in regards to ground floor and commercial restrictions, if it runs up against those same limitations, or if there's other creative ways on working with that.
Brian, do you mind me to speak to the zoning piece on that?
Sure.
All right. So I think we've listed this a lot in the context of the current zoning, which is PDI. PDI, for our code, we can get to a place that allows residential, but it does through the PDC requirements. Kind of a lot of circular referencing, but essentially there's a requirement for a minimum amount of what the code defines as commercial space, minimum, so at least 50.11, or 49.99%, something like that. So one option is, we have to look at how we're interpreting the word "commercial" and whether or not it's purely transactional. Is it, you know, offering some kind of service to people, and we can look at it that way? You know, that being said, another option is to look at a, you know, different zoning venue, particularly if we don't think retail in the traditional sense is viable. We could look at some other options, one of which was noted, more of a public facilities zone, and implementing it through some state statutes. And so I think we have some different ways we can get there, and I think as we start looking at what's viable and what really we're desiring, that might help us, you know, ultimately figure out what that entitlement path is down the road. So I wouldn't say we're locked into what's in PDI. It's just our starting point.
Thank you. So I just wanted to add that I also see a lot of promise with Project Two. I see it does have an option, a reference to ownership as a possibility. And so I like that idea, and I do like the idea of a way to accommodate the lower incomes and also retain families, so they don't, they don't qualify out, they don't kind of get disqualified, because it takes a while to come from, you know, to get to, get your footing and get to a place of stability. So we have, just because of the time constraints, may I ask the team, has this been helpful? And what else could we do to give you more information, given our time situation?
It's been helpful to me. And I guess, we've talked, we've talked a good bit about Project One versus Project Two. We've heard that you'd like to see more deeply affordable units. You like the larger units, family-oriented units. You like the idea of ownership of active ground floors at some level. I guess I just asked, and I think that gives us information to go on. And I don't know if there are any other must-haves for you in this project that I missed in that very brief summary.
And I also heard, maybe next time we come back, if you could bring some examples of successful TOD developments around the country, that would be helpful, too.
Sure.
And, thank you. And then on Project One, before we totally cancel it out, I thought it did have some pluses, but maybe you could just bring it back to us on, you know, how, as you look at these other things, what is possible there, given its highly competitive nature? And I'm not sure if we spent enough time on it to know if we're stepping away from it. I'd just like to see if it's still viable.
You know, just candidly, I think one of the challenges with Project One will be, will be timing. Kim mentioned zoning. And when a developer submits an application in the spring of next year, they will need to have certainty regard, that what they're proposing to do is allowed in the zoning. So just getting the zoning in the right place, you know, and getting a developer on board and getting an agreement between the city and the developer, those will be, those will come quickly. And, and so that's one of the reasons we think...
It's less viable.
It's less viable, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Well, I understand that, and we want, we don't want to force a thing that's too challenging and will leave us with nothing. So I appreciate that. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and we will now move on to our presentation with ODOT on the I-5 205 tolling and congestion management.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Mark Ottenhead, Public and Government Affairs Director. We will probably use up the remaining 45 minutes with the presentation by ODOT. This was originally scheduled some time ago, and due to various delays, due to the press of staff bringing business to council, we're now here in September. The presentation is multifaceted. We'll be looking at the tolling congestion pricing update, including the Oregon Toll Program, their regional mobility pricing project, and the I-205 toll program. Subsequently, the council requested ODOT to also address issues around the I-5 Boone Bridge and seismic improvement project, and the proposed French Prairie Bridge as the alternative transportation facility, as well as a STIP project for the I-5 northbound auxiliary lane from Highway 551 to the Charbonneau Mile Road. And finally, the council requested some south-of-the-river updates pertaining to the I-5 Aurora Donald Interchange, the proposed Aurora State Airport, Airport Planning Advisory Committee, and the new Amazon warehouse in Woodburn. I will act as a slight advancer for the ODOT staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Senator Sartor, Program Director from ODOT. I have a real quick question. Would it be okay with you guys if we flipped the order? Our slides are, we have the bulk of the slides, and I thought that to get through all of it, we could go to the bottom and then work our way back up to the top. How does that work for you guys?
I'm Masay.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Mark, if you could go to the, I think the last one was, not our slides, but go all the way down to the beginning of the third presentation. It's all the way I see you.
205? The 205 project?
No, the Aurora, because the Boone, Boone Bridge was second, and then the Aurora Interchange.
Yeah. Thank you.
So you want, you want me to jump to which one?
Aurora.
This one?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Hi, this is Anna Henson with Oregon Department of Transportation. So it sounds like we're going to go first tonight. Okay. We'll be quick. We know we're short on time. Hi, I'm the project manager with ODOT, and I'm in charge of the delivery of the I-5 Aurora Donald Interchange project. And we're here to kind of give you an update on this project. With me today, I have Ed Chamberlain. He's the DEA project manager. And we're going to kind of split this presentation, so I'll do the first couple of slides, and then I'll hand it off to Ed. So, oh, sorry. Well, that's fine. You can leave it there. Just to give a little bit of background, first, this project is part of the House Bill 2017 Keep Oregon Moving project. The legislature gave us $25 million to try to fix this interchange. That wasn't quite enough money, unfortunately. So we're trying to make the best with what we have. Thirty, just to give background on the issues in this interchange, 32,000 vehicles use this exit or travel past these ramp exits and entrances and exits off of I-5. That volume of traffic, along with the proximity of the local roads and access points, and there's some visibility issues out in this area, have just caused congestion and safety concerns around the interchange. You've probably seen it, the southbound off-ramp has a tendency to back up onto I-5. We've done some interim improvements there to help that until we can get a better fix going. So next slide, well, this slide right here, the progress to date, we've completed alternative analysis and done extensive stakeholder outreach, and ended up collecting a diverging diamond interchange for this area. That will be the second one in Oregon. The first one is down in southern Oregon, just south of Medford in Phoenix. It's working really well down there. It has a smaller footprint, and it just operates incredibly well. And when Ed, when Ed takes over, he'll talk to you about operation, and then if anybody has any questions, we can get into more details about that. We've completed our environmental documentation, an interchange area management plan, and then just, well, really, just today, finished Phase 1A, which you'll see what that's going to be here in a minute, the bid documents for that, and that's going to our project control office here on Monday. So we're pretty excited. That's a big milestone for us. And, and then we are just waiting on additional funding for the full bill. And again, Ed will show you what the full bill looks like. We were on, we've applied for several grants and have not been recipients of those, and hoping that we're going to get a federal earmark of some sort to build the full project. So I will hand it off to Ed.
Thanks, Anna. So as Anna mentioned, we came up with a diverging diamond as the preferred alternative. This slide introduces that design, and it's a little bit confusing, because it's new and its design, traffic crosses over from one side to the other through the interchange, and that's what leads to some of its efficiencies. It was, it was by a large margin, the most efficient design, and it operates, it'll operate for several decades into the future, even taking into account the heavy traffic that goes to the nearby truck stops. So it's a high-performing solution. And to make it work, and to kind of make the overall safety and mobility at this interchange better, we needed to move on the west side here, the Bince Road. You can see Old Bince Road. We moved that to the, to the west, to a new intersection with Ellen Road out in that field there. And, and then Old Ellen Road, as you can see on the map, continues to be in place to serve existing businesses. This concept was fully supported by both truck stops. We engaged them during stakeholder outreach, and that was real positive. On the east side, there's an RV park there, and there's a road there that's pretty close to the interchange, and so we moved that to the east. to the interchange, and so we moved that to the east, Dolores Way, so that the east side would operate better as well. The project will replace the bridges on I-5, include, includes new signals with that S in the circle, Circle S, at three locations there, reconstructs a significant amount of the southbound direction of I-5, and then it reconstructs all four ramps, you know, modernizing this interchange since it's a 1960s-era interchange. So I'm probably not following my notes very well here. Make sure I got everything. I think that pretty much covers everything there. The next slide highlights in red what we are advancing in Phase 1A. We are doing the Bince Road relocation there on the west side, moving that out of the way of the interchange and consistent with the ultimate design. And then we're going to do the northbound exit ramp, and then put up a retaining wall and a sound wall along the RV park, which will help cut down the noise during construction of the larger interchange when we come back for, for the next part. So cost of that is in the ballpark of 11 million. Previous slide real quick.
Does council have questions, or should we keep advancing with the presentation due to time?
Let's keep going.
Thank you.
Anyone, one succinct question on that? Okay.
All right. ODOT staff-
The other thing to add is we anticipate this to be a one-season project, and it'll be followed by the larger project the next two seasons after that.
Do you have any questions?
There's a question from Counsel Leehan. Counsel Leehan?
Yeah. If you could back up to your picture, can you, can you tell me the, the impact on this farm field? Is that, I presume that's one owner, but is that the owner of the other farm fields also? Are we losing that, all of that farm field up to what appears to be that farm piece's border? In other, in other words, do you do some analysis on making that no longer economically viable as a agricultural piece? And have we lost the whole thing, or just the part you've taken?
Anna, you want me to take a shot at that, or you want to?
You can take a shot, and then I'll, I'll add if needed.
Okay. The project, the larger project does require a conditional use permit due to the realignment of Ellen Road. The Bince Road realignment is in the TSP, and so it's part of their comp plan. The remnant parcels that'll be left over after ODOT builds this project will be either sold back to the farmer or sold to another use, and then it would be up to the, that either previous owner or subsequent owner to do, I guess, whatever they wanted with it.
Well, sold to another use is a big issue on EFU.
I believe the zoning here is an interchange zoning. I forget the exact term, but it's an interchange zoning. There is some EFU on the very west end, that small triangle where Ellen Road comes back onto its original alignment. So I think that's the, the limit of EFU impacts in that larger field there.
So, so you expect that it will be commercialized all the way out there?
It's hard to say. It's really hard to say.
I don't think it's that hard to say. Okay, that's all.
Very good. ODOT staff, what would be the next presentation?
The one before this was the Boone Bridge, so let's go back to that one then.
Hi, everyone. This is Scott Turnoy. Sorry for the confusion here. So, yeah, moving backwards in, in the agenda, the next item would be the I-5 Boone Bridge and Seismic Improvements project update, with a brief update on the 24 to 27 STIP Enhance Program, in which there is one proposal that's relevant to the Boone Bridge area. So I'm trying to find my slides here. Mark, you can advance to the next one. So I wanted to provide a brief background on our efforts surrounding Boone Bridge, provide an update on our current status, and, and some next, our initial next steps. And like I said, an update on the enhancement program. So in terms of background, and what kind of what got us to this point, and forgive me, I'm going to try and race through this so that you have some time for questions and getting to Lucinda and Garrett's presentation. But as many of you are aware, back in 2018, there was the congestion study that identified the Boone Bridge area as a significant southbound bottleneck on I-5. The 2018 Wilsonville Facility Plan identified recommended improvements, including the southbound Ox Lane between Wilsonville Road and Oregon 551 exit. In 2019, Region One's C-Boss 2 effort evaluated several bottleneck areas, including one on I-5 northbound, which is sort of the, one of the venues where the kind of genesis of the northbound Ox Lane extension idea came from, in terms of addressing safety and congestion issues in the Oregon 551 entrance area, Miley Road entrance area to the southern end of the Boone Bridge. Moving into 2020 and 2021, ODOT was mandated to study and develop a cost estimate related to providing a widened, seismically resilient Boone Bridge, which we delivered in January 2021 to the Oregon Legislature, which recommended that our feasibility study ultimately ended up with the recommendation that a full bridge replacement was the optimal approach to providing a seismic facility that also addressed future, current and future needs. We presented to the city council on the outcomes of that study earlier this year. And in the meantime, the Oregon Transportation Commission identified some funding, about $3.7 million, to fund project planning and initial project development through 2023, so enabled ODOT to start to consider some initial next steps on advancing this project. And then this was all kind of happening, and we gave our presentation, I believe, in the spring to the city council, when the Oregon legislative session was going on, and there were some, certainly some relevant bills being discussed. One of those did pass, House Bill 3055, which provided some flexibility in terms of the projects that House Bill 2017 funding could be put towards in the future. And the Boone Bridge project is one of those. So worth tracking and worth calling out. There, there are some opportunities. I should mention that House Bill 3065, which was kind of a companion effort in the legislative session, did not, I don't believe it got a vote, I don't know if it moved out of committee, but that was an effort to tie the French Prairie Bridge project with the Boone Bridge project advancing. So basically, we're, we're in a similar position that, that we were back in the spring when we came, with the added benefit of the OTC funding that was identified, and the House Bill 3055 passing the legislative session. Next slide, please. So that brings us to where we are and where we've been in the recent past this year. We basically find ourselves in a pre-NIPA, in a project planning, early project development phase. Like I said, we completed our feasibility study, which was really looking at a seismic retrofit versus a full replacement option, and did some preliminary analysis around that. We developed a cost estimate at that, that stage. It's a, it's a $450 to $550 million cost range, which is a wide range. And so some initial next steps are really going to be focused on further analysis related, some related to geotechnical analysis, but also some evaluation of options, looking at what sort of facility to serve bicycles and pedestrians in this area will be required, whether it's something that's built on the Boone Bridge, or can we look to the French Prairie Bridge as the alternative transportation option? These are some options that we may include in our evaluation of what, what ends up being required. How do we meet like-the requirements with advancing the Boone Bridge project? Some additional items that we'll have to address early on in our next steps include establishing our environmental classification for the Boone Bridge project, coordinating with FHWA on getting that established classification, whether it's an EA, categorical exclusion, or an EIS. And as part of our feasibility study, we did initiate an environmental project prospectus that we would intend to complete, which would help us in that communication with FHWA. And as I mentioned, begin to address additional risk items, to try and really narrow down our, our cost estimates to better position us for project programming. Next slide. So that's basically the update I have for kind of where we're at with Boone Bridge. But I, I wanted to make sure I had time to mention the proposal, if folks aren't already aware, of the northbound I-5 auxiliary lane extension, which currently there's an auxiliary lane from Miley Road entrance on I-5 northbound that goes across the Boone Bridge and exits at Wilsonville Road. This project would extend that auxiliary lane south to the Oregon 551 entrance, and it would convert the Miley Road entrance ramp into a merge ramp. So you basically end up with a longer, slightly longer auxiliary lane. But we feel that this, and in the C-Boss 2 evaluation that we conducted, it, it was very promising in terms of the safety and traffic operations benefits, the reduction in reliable, in travel time delays, the potential reduction in conflicts between merging vehicles coming on at Oregon 551, and the substantial number of trucks and passenger vehicles that are coming from further south, and then others that are positioning for exiting at the Wilsonville Road exit. So we see this as having a lot of potential for operational benefit. It fits with the criteria for the STIP Enhanced Highway Discretionary Funding Program for the 2427 STIP. And Region One staff have submitted a proposal for funding to the State Selection Committee, which will be making a determination on which of those proposals that have come from the five regions around the state for ODOT, which will move forward into a scoping, scoping phase. Actually, move to the next, next slide, we've got a calendar for that program. So this says early September for generating a draft project list. That's likely going to be, this month, they're going to be reviewing the proposals, and then a decision made on what moves into the 125% list or so for the STIP Enhance Program. That'll, that happened by early October. Like I said, it'll move into a project scoping phase, including some greenhouse gas emissions analysis for the projects, and then we'll go out for another round of feedback from local partners, regional partners, in the wintertime. And then by, by next spring, we should have the 100% list decided on by the statewide selection committee. And with that, I will be happy to take any questions.
I see a question from Counsel Leehan.
Yes, I don't know that I've ever heard on the discussions of the replacement bridge, which I think is an excellent idea, but what, what are we talking about in terms of total lanes, both in, on the replacement, both in terms of through lanes, auxiliary lanes, and, and potential to add more lanes in the future, you know, 20, 50 years from now?
Thank you for that clarifying question. I intended to be clearer about that when I was discussing it. But the, the feasibility study that we finished and submitted earlier this year, presented on to council in the spring, that study and in advancing the project, we would have similar assumptions of a bridge that would mirror what is in place today, but also accommodate the I-5 Wilsonville Facility Plan. So that would have the, that would include the southbound Ox Lane from Wilsonville Road to Oregon 551. The facility plan, as is also listed in the regional transportation plan, also includes a two-lane exit ramp at exit 282A. So you would maintain the northbound Ox Lane that you have today. We would be looking to incorporate the Ox Lane extension that I just mentioned, that we've submitted a proposal for funding through the 2427 STIP. We, we know that those, the bridge and that Ox Lane extension project northbound would need to be coordinated, given the proximity of the ramp to the bridge. But the main improvement that we've been focused on is that Wilsonville Facility Plan recommendation of the southbound Ox Lane.
So, so still just three through lanes?
Three through lanes in each direction and an Ox Lane in each direction.
And no ability to expand it to a fourth?
That is not something we've been discussing, so I'll, I'll have to follow up with others internally to see, you know, 20, 50 years down the road, what, what options might be considered. But I, I can't answer that at this point in time, but I appreciate the question.
Thank you. Counsel Lindell.
Thank you. On the staff report that we have, which is, I think it's page three of four, where it talks about the 2427 STIP project, and it looks like in that, in that description that it is, that it's considered a component of the I-5 Boone Bridge Seismic Improvement Project to do that limited segment northbound Ox Lane from the Wilsonville Hubbard cutoff to my, to the Miley Road. And my, my question kind of falls on, a little bit on the heels of Counsel Leehan, and, and I'm wondering, why would we spend $9 to $11 million to do that if, in fact, it's, it's not, it's going to have to be redone when the bridge is, is that the point? It's going to be redone when, when the bridge is redone?
Oh, maybe I mischaracterized it. I, I don't think our intention would be to redo that, that ramp, that Ox Lane Extension project. So there's, the way that we developed our feasibility assessment over the last year and what we submitted to the legislature, was to develop a cost estimate range that was inclusive of that, that northbound Ox Lane Extension. Should it happen beforehand, we would need it to be designed in such a way that when the bridge replacement comes in, it's, it's readily connected. It's, it, basically, we want to be cognizant of both improvements, whether the Ox Lane Extension happens before or during the bridge project, if that makes sense.
Yeah. The only concern that I have, and I'm sure that, that ODOT has done numerous studies about this, but the merge lane, the merge lane from Miley Road onto that current northbound Ox Lane is, would that be lighted? Would it be metered?
That's a really good question. We've looked at options for both. In our C-Boss evaluation, I believe we, we noted that the alternatives could include metering at one or both of the Oregon 551 or, and/or Miley Road entrance ramps. But the key improvement in terms of operations came from extending that Ox Lane back to the Oregon 551 entrance. But you're-
Yeah, I, I, I drive that, so I know, I know that the 551 is very, it's a dangerous entrance, you know, trying to merge onto I-5. And I'm, and my concern is that we're just going to move that a little bit farther down, and it's still going to be just as dangerous merging onto I-5. It's just that it's now going to have vehicles from two, you know, two entrances onto the freeway instead of one. So, but I, I'm assuming that you've done all the, that ODOT will have done all of the appropriate safety studies to make sure that that, you know, we're not just, I mean, if you look at the people who drive on that northbound Ox Lane, the average speed is between 35 and 50. And the, the vehicles that will be coming from 551 will have enough time to get up to 65 miles an hour. And so I, I think it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, move, move the danger from where it is just up a little bit further. So until the bridge is fixed, I don't, I don't, it's still going to be a problem, so.
I certainly appreciate the, the comments, and we'll take it back into, we do anticipate some additional traffic analysis of that concept as we, as we hopefully get funding and advance it. But I certainly can appreciate wanting to avoid having to merge with vehicles coming at you from both directions, lanes next to you. So that would be a strong argument for metering one or both ramps, so that you're providing enough space.
Yeah. Thank you. We have no more questions. We can move on.
Mayor Fitzgerald and counsel, we have about 52 slides, and I'm not sure we could get it- get it done in four minutes.
I think it's not more than four minutes.
You adjourn at seven or 6:45?
Seven.
Okay. We will, I hate to say speed through this, because there are probably some highlights that you'd probably want to hear about more than us speeding through. So how about we highlight the Regional Mobility Pricing Project, and then the Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee? And then we can come back and do, do the others. Does that work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So you want to, yeah, here, here. Okay, Garrett?
Yeah?
There you go.
Hello, Wilsonville City Council, Garrett Pryor here with ODOT Toll Policy Manager. Mark, do you want to go back just to where you see Regional Mobility Pricing Project on the screen? Before this. So go, go, oh, sorry, go ahead, forward. Sorry, you've gone back too far. Okay, right there. So this is a project, Regional Mobility Pricing Project. There are two tolling projects currently going on in the region. The Regional Mobility Pricing Project, which you see is the teal on the screen there, and then the I-5 Toll Project, which is in the blue. It's the section seven mile stretch, and it matches the footprint of the I-205 improvements, because the tolling is needed to fully deliver that improvements project. But the Regional Mobility Pricing Project includes the Boone Bridge and all of I-5, and then all of the segments of I-205. That would be the largest footprint we would study. In the next few years, we're going to determine kind of which areas get told and at what rates. Next, next slide. And so a key decision that really is kind of kicking off this project here is the Purpose and Need Statement. It's really the start of that NEPA or Federal Environmental Review Process. And so we have it out now, and it kind of lists out what are the goals for the project, what's the purpose for this tolling project. And really between now and this early next year, that's where that kind of gets determined, and what alternatives would be studied in that, that year, year and a half of environmental review. That kind of, that gets kind of started here this, by this next spring. Next slide. And so where, you know, where did this come from? You know, why is ODOT studying this? You have one, you have, going back to 2017, you have the direction from the legislature to put tolling, to study tolling in the Portland metro area. And then in the subsequent years, there was what's called a value pricing feasibility analysis, and they looked at one of these concepts, Concept C, which then kind of turned into this, that was a recommendation there that then turned into the Regional Mobility Pricing Project you see we're studying today. Next slide. So this is one of those, it's, it's not a requirement, but it's a standard that could be used in it in maintaining those vehicle speeds and setting up, and really providing that benefit, which is the hope with tolling, is that we can reduce these congestions and bottlenecks on the highways through, through congestion pricing, but also through delivering key core projects and improvements in the region, like the Boone Bridge, Rose Corridor, Interstate Bridge, and I-205 improvements. And so this 45 mile per hour standard is just an idea of what that future could look like with tolling and with those investments. Next slide. This will be, you will know the toll rate before you get on the road. We're going after what's called a variable rate toll schedule. So that means there's higher tolls in areas where there's higher congestion, and there's lower or no tolls in areas where there's less or little or no congestion at all. Next slide. And so I'll, I'll just kind of skip through this, but this kind of basically tells you a little more incrementally about how we're developing that Purpose and Need Statement between now and next spring. Next slide. And then there is, there's some regional votes with, with our Regional Transportation Board, and Metro, and Metro has the Regional Transportation Agency. And so there's a few key things that are going to be developing through that process to go there. Next slide. And then we, you want me to focus on the equity one, correct? So can you go back then, sorry, Mark, to the EMAC work? Yeah, one more? And one more? Sorry, just a few more to the title. All right. So we know how Wilsonville locks up when the highway gets backed up. And, and in the future of tolling, we, the hope is through that congestion pricing and investments to alleviate that congestion on the highway, which will then unlock the gridlock that is in communities. But we do know that some people are going to try to avoid the highways by driving off or diverting. And so that's where the Oregon Transportation Commission has really commissioned ODOT to figure out what are investments in transit and multimodal options, what are, what can we do to address the impact, the low-income communities and people experiencing low incomes, and what can we do to address if there are cars going off the road to avoid the tolls? What kind of investments in neighborhood health and safety can ODOT be making with tolling to address those needs? And so the ODOT has, Oregon Transportation Commission has directed ODOT to go back and study this and come back to them with, with what can tolling be done in those areas to address those needs? Next slide. Let's go, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. So Dwight Frashear, which, who you heard from here earlier tonight, is on the Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee, and they've really been helping lead ODOT and really push us beyond kind of what our normal practice is in looking at what will best advance equity in those different areas that we were commissioned from the OTC. And so, next slide. And so really, they, I think, two things to highlight here, and then I'll, I'll probably wrap it up. But they're looking at equity, not just achieving that in the outcomes, but really in the process, and changing the way that ODOT does business in these big environmental reviews. And so you see here on the right side of the screen, it's called our Equity Framework, and it's a much more iterative process of where we're bringing data out, and then receiving feedback, and kind of making changes and adjustments as we go through the process. And really, that, you see that most explicitly in those commitments in those different policy areas that I talked about before. And so we, we use the term equity, it gets put on a lot of things here recently in, you know, in government, in our transportation world, but really defining who that is is a key thing. So it's not just used as a, you know, kind of as a, as a facade, but really is used to inform action. And so who, what, and where, when we're using the term equity, we're trying to capture that and define that here in this Equity Framework Step One, which is a document we can provide that talks about that. Next slide. Next slide. So I'll, I'll end here, and then we'll take questions, but, so the work of that Equity and Mobility Advisory Committee is, has really been for this past year, and they're working towards their first recommendation on what is needed from a policy standpoint, from kind of strategic investment standpoint, and to really address those policy areas of transit multimodal diversion and neighborhood health and safety and impacts to low income. And so I'd say just, this November's OTC meeting is going to be important. You'll see their first kind of cut of recommendations on what ODOT should do in these very important areas. All right.
Is this, all the slides we're going to see, is this a point for questions now?
Yes.
I wanted to, to just comment that this is the first time in quite a while, I know that we've talked about this at the Wilsonville City Council, they probably, they did in 2020, I know, and, and I've had the opportunity to go to probably 12 or 15 presentations along this last few months about this, and there's a lot to learn. One, one thing that I've been, been hearing is when there are questions or concerns presented about mitigation for, for diversion into neighborhoods, lots of discussion about what ODOT is taking back to study and coming back with some remedies. Maybe you could just, I know one of the areas you've really been focusing on is West Lynn. Could you give a little update on where you are with addressing those questions from that West Lynn area about diversion, please?
Yeah, definitely. So I'll say, one, it's, it's kind of going to be a two-part thing. It's where is the data showing us that diversion is and what's coming out with that traffic analysis? So we started with our regional modeling, we're now getting into kind of sub-regional modeling. And one of the initial results we're showing are where are some areas where we're seeing traffic increase and decrease. And so two specific examples, Stafford Road between Wilsonville and West Lynn, we're actually seeing traffic decrease on Stafford Road when tolling and the I-205 improvements is put in place, because more people are staying on the highway, because they're getting the travel time savings and the reliability. Where we are seeing traffic increase and we're concerned about is in Canby as a way of people, you know, getting around that tolling on I-205 by going through Canby. So what's going to happen here in the next four months is we're going to be developing out that first draft of the environmental assessment, and you'll see through the Clackamas County coordinating meetings and, and working with Clackamas County staff, we're going to start bringing more of that information almost on a monthly basis to those meetings with elected officials, but then also staff with all the cities. And then in areas specifically like a Canby or a downtown Oregon city where we're seeing that increased diversion, we're going to work with community organizations and really get down to the neighborhood level to really try to figure out what those solutions that could be to address those impacts.
Other questions? Council Leehan? I think you're muted.
Not specifically on what has been covered, because this all sounds pretty good, but, but the concerns that we had raised earlier about the, the new Amazon facility going in in Woodburn, and what that means to the impacts on the Boone Bridge, and whether ODOT has, has done traffic engineering studies for, or origin and destination for, for that facility, and, and what their likely route is and those sort of things, and what the impact is, especially to the Boone Bridge, but, but also to the Donald Interchange and, and all those other roads that are in French Prairie that, that are not up to, that are old mark, farm-to-market roads. Anyway, we're, we're kind of out in the dark here as to what the expectation is. So I don't know when, when it's appropriate to ask, ask about that. I presume that you have had some involvement in this in terms of the traffic impacts to your facility? Or maybe not.
Counsel Leehan, this is Scott Ternoy. Are you, you're referring to analysis specific to the Amazon development?
Uh, yes, yes. Yes, yes, because I, I presume most of the traffic coming out of that facility will be coming to, coming up, coming to the north. Is it coming, are you presuming it's coming up 99E, or is it coming up I-5?
Going to have to, if they're still available. Anna or Ed, I think we've had a conversation internally, but did you have any information from the Region Two Development Review folks that you could weigh in on?
Hi. You know, I think we, I remember seeing an email from Dan Fricki, our senior planner, that Amazon was required to do a traffic impact study on the Wilsonville Interchange, but I don't know anything further than that. I'm sorry, I haven't been fully engaged in that at all. I'm working on wildfire recovery and, and then doing the Aurora Donalds Interchange project. So as far as I know, that for our project, the Aurora Donalds, the traffic impact, our, our traffic study did not include that Amazon, expected Amazon traffic. And Ed might be able to help me out with a little, a little on that. And we can also follow up. We're happy to follow up on that, too.
Yeah, well, what, because what we would be interested in is the volume, where, where it's originating and where it's going. Is it all coming out of PDX? Is it, and headed to Woodburn? And if so, what's the route? Is it 99E? Is it I-5? And, you know, whichever route it is, what bridges are impacted and what local roads are impacted? But I don't know the volume or the origin, we know the destination, but then they're going to be leaving Woodburn, I presume mostly headed north, some headed south. But, but that's part of what a traffic study would show you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess I can loop back around with that information from Dan Fricki, our senior planner, if that's helpful. I'm not sure what I, who would I need to reach out to here, maybe just?
Someone, city staff, the city attorney or the city manager, they'll direct you where you.
You can just send it to Mark Ottnod.
Okay.
Mark, our government guy.
Yes, that is very important to us. One of our, the, the main reason we have traffic discussions and challenges in Wilsonville is because of I-5, and we're working on a number of things, then all of a sudden, we have a, apparently a huge additional reason for traffic. So we do want to hear about that, and what has been done.
And, and I have to say, I'm disappointed to hear, if we're going to be doing a whole bridge rebuild, which I think is a good idea, but it's still going to have the same lane capacity that it does now, I, and, and your numbers say 70% of freight is moving by truck and expected to increase by blah, blah, blah. Why would we do that?
If I could provide one point of clarification, the, the new bridge, the replacement bridge would include a new southbound auxiliary lane, so you'd have, you know.
Yeah, yeah, one, one additional auxiliary lane. But I, but I mean, I'm, I'm always comparing the number of lanes that are cross, this is a, this is a, as your material says, this is a candidate of Mexico highway. And all of those, look how many lanes are crossing the Columbia. I don't know, how many? 14, 16, 12? A lot of lanes are crossing the Columbia between the Glen Jackson and the CRC, and how many are crossing the Boone Bridge? And, and that same truck traffic, that same north-south through truck traffic has to get across the Columbia and the Willamette. And, and I don't, there's no business to there. I mean, it's just massively out of balance, it would seem to me. And I thought if they were doing a new bridge, doing a whole new bridge, they would be trying to get some equity between what those I-5, I-205 are crossing the Columbia with what they're crossing the Willamette down here, because they all merge just north of Wilsonville. All those trucks come together just north of Wilsonville.
Yeah, I, I want to acknowledge the, the high volume of trucks that we have in the Wilsonville area. Certainly, it's not lost on me, I'm involved in our Regional Traffic Performance Report effort, and, and we have, you know, pretty good data that shows exactly what you're saying. There's a lot of trucks coming through the Wilsonville area on I-5, there's a lot of passenger vehicles as well. I would say, though, one limiting factor that we have to remember is our, our regional policy that does limit the freeway through lanes to three in each direction, plus auxiliary lanes. So that's one of our, one of the parameters we're, we're working within is the policy of the Regional Transportation Plan.
Yeah, yeah. But you, but you understand the inequity, it won't change the, it won't change the bottleneck with that level of inequity between the Columbia and the Willamette. Anyway, I don't need to debate you here.
So, thank you. We are at 7 o'clock, and I want to thank Lucinda and Garrett and Anna, Ed, your team for coming to meet with us tonight, and I think we do have some follow-up needs to discuss. Next time we'll allocate more time, but we did get about 45 minutes, and I really appreciate it. Excuse me, Counsel West.
One quick question.
We are out of time, so just keep it to brief, one question.
It's no secret that I'm, I'm super skeptical of the benefit to Wilsonville residents for tolling, and I am not convinced that any of the path measures taken are going to actually help the residents here. It seems often that taxpayers... It seems often that taxpayers' time and money seem to be often not considered well enough. So my question is, if the surrounding communities, Canby, Wilsonville, this area are very, have severe desperate impacts based on diversion to our country roads, to our small community roads, what is the mitigating fact, what will be, how will that be mitigated in a way that will alleviate that necessarily? Or if you can't alleviate it, is tolling potentially jeopardized if it's going to have such a desperate impact on us communities on the edge of the River and Grove boundary?
And before you answer that, that's one topic that I think, I've spent a lot of time listening to, and I think maybe we need, I'd like to have an answer to it, but I'd like to also say it may need another entire session, so that we don't use 35 seconds to answer that.
I would say for mitigation, we kind of don't know what you need until we figure out what it is. So at this point, it's not, I can't foresee what the mitigation will be. What we'll try to do is, of course, dissipate traffic and make sure it doesn't go that way. Does that mean stoplights? Does that mean roundabouts? Does that mean some improvements? I don't know. But all of those things will be taken into consideration as we go forward.
I guess if it's not adequately mitigated, is Wilsonville just SOL? Like, I'm not convinced it can be mitigated. You know, we can study and, you know, throw a little bureaucratic heads together, pretend like we're going to fix this problem, but all sign so far point to Wilsonville being very desperately impacted in this situation and having a really bad outcome here. Like, I'm very concerned about my community. And right now, the way it stands is, I see this being very detrimental to Wilsonville. And I also am not comfortable paying for tolls, and neither are my neighbors, that my grandparents already paid for. So, I mean, there's real concerns here. And I want to know, like, if it really hurts these communities, is the legislature, is ODOT going to back off and say, this isn't good for Oregon or for these communities? Or are we going to just be stuck with it?
Well, we are trying to make sure you're not stuck with anything, that we address what's going on in the community. So I wouldn't say you're just stuck with it. We're actually stuck with figuring out what the solution is for you. So Mayor Fitzgerald, would you love to come back?
Okay, so what I would like to do is, I think I would like to talk with your staff about a way to take some of the presentations that you've had and put that together in a, one thing that we really didn't discuss in this tonight is we did not discuss the funding. How are we going to pay for the freeways? How are we going to pay for this? And also the conditions around things that have already, what is the difference between the freeways that have already been paid for and the system of how that has been taken into account? And how do we pay for new facilities? So I think we need to go into the funding discussion and also, and how we came to this point, and what are alternatives?
Not a problem.
Those are the things I can think of right now. So maybe Mark Ottnod and I can work with you on outlining that next presentation. I think we don't have enough time for our council to hear about it and discuss it fully. So this is our first chance in several months.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are over time, so I am going to adjourn the work session, and we will determine how to address the one other item after the break. So I will adjourn the Wilsonville City Council work session at 7:07 PM, and we'll see you back.